Item 7C, information update on August 25th, 2020, council COVID-19 initiatives, potential drive-in movie at Tanfran and partial street closure of San Mateo Avenue for outdoor dining/retail.
City manager.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the city council, Devon Rogan, city manager. I want to give a informational update on two items as the title mentioned. One is outdoor dining, thank you, and the second is a potential downtown street closure. You know, I'd be remiss in letting the past presentation go by without just saying thank you to Jennifer Brazil, our assistant city manager. This was her debut presentation. She started with us two months ago and really stepped both feet in supporting our labor negotiations. So happy to relinquish being the city manager and the HR director and the assistant city manager. But thank you so much for everything you've done. It is truly a testament to the organization and the partnership that you have towards with our employees and the organization. So for the update on these two items, as we all know, at the last city council meeting, the city council asked staff to look into two items related to COVID-19. One was a potential drive-in movie to take place at Tanfran, and the other was looking at a potential street closure for San Mateo Avenue with expediencing to look at interval and with potential to return to the city council for additional direction. Why don't I begin first with the drive-in movie theater? Because that is unfortunately the simplest one because we could have roadblock. So after the last council meeting, we partnered with Tanfran. The mayor made the initial contact with Linda Larson from CBRE, who's the manager of Tanfran. And we put together a staff team, people from the police department or public works department and our community services department, as well as myself, to partner with Tanfran to potentially do a drive-in movie theater there. And we had a few calls with the city of Burlingame, who recently did somewhere event. What we found out is to hold the event is approximately $10,000. There's some initial set of costs we could leverage horsepower that we have because we did movies in the park previously, and so our staff is familiar with the process. And the Tanfran was willing to use some of their own marketing money to leverage, provide some leverage and inertia to the project. Unfortunately, conversations with the cinema have prevented us from moving forward. It's looking like they're preparing to reopen as soon as possible. And the lease between the cinema and the mall actually prohibits any other showing of cinemas or movies on the property. And so it is not currently known when the cinema will reopen. And that very well could be the next time we have a downgrade in our county-wide COVID-19 measure, COVID-19 restrictions. And so the mall thought that it was prudent to back away from these conversations, given the fact that the cinema has an exclusive right for movie theaters. And currently, they're looking forward to welcoming participants back, even if they can open partially. And so bringing it back to staff, we've had some conversations about returning our movies in the park program. And would really like to flag that to the next downgrade in our COVID-19 status that you may remember from the presentation that Jennifer Dionles provided earlier today. We are currently in the highest category for COVID-19 risk in the state and widespread. The next downgrade is into the substantial category. We do believe that when we hit that next downgrade, weather permitting, we could tilt up a movies in the park and do a little bit of what some other communities have done for some of their spontaneous park gatherings and draw circles on the grass and make sure that there's appropriate distance. And so staff will begin to look at implementing that program, weather permitting. Hopefully, we don't have smoke from the fires and it's not too windy to begin that program. But should that happen, we would look to reactivate in that fashion. And so I can take any questions on that, and for the next one, we do have a presentation.
There is a member of the community, so I'm not certain if it's on this topic. I know there was Mr. O'Brien wanting to speak on the next one, so why don't we take one at a time, if we could? And we'll ask city clerk if he can bring in Mr. Mercney, please.
Yes, Ryan Mercney, I am... Hi, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay, there you are. Whenever you're ready.
Thank you. I would like to speak in support of downtown dining and shutting off the streets a couple of days of the week. While it's not a solution to the problems that we have, I think it goes forward to attracting people downtown and that it can be done socially distan... oh, safely with social distancing. Also, to bring the cost down, I'm wondering if we can have either the workers at the restaurants that would partake, either ones setting up and taking down the tables, or could we ask the community to volunteer? It benefits us all to see it thriving downtown. And I think this is one of the few places that we can do something socially distant that is safe and brings back some revenue to our city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and I don't see any other hand raised. I'm giving it a moment because I know that Mr. O'Brien...
We'll have the city manager go into, because he has a presentation into the second item, and then we can see if anybody also has a hand up.
Okay.
City manager?
Okay. Mayor and council, so a brief presentation. So similar to looking into a potential drive-in movie, we organized a team. And the council direction that we had at the very last meeting was investigate a partial closure of San Mateo Avenue for outdoor dining to support our business community. And the thought was potentially do it Saturdays during September, potentially from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. We also talked about seeking input from businesses. We have some information to share there. Council wanted estimated cost, and then the direction ended with return to the council for further direction. And so that is why we're here tonight. So a partial closure. So at the council meeting and upon further research, we really took a look into if we were going to implement a pilot project to close San Mateo Avenue. Where would be the most appropriate location? And we sort of zeroed in on this location at the last council meeting. But it's San Mateo Avenue between Canes and Angus. And those of you that are very familiar with downtown will know that there are a total of five entrances to this block section. And the reason why we all centered on this is because it's a block section that is contained. You have a number of restaurants, and this pilot project was really geared toward supporting our restaurants. And you have Arctic Show shows there that has just set up their outdoor casino area that will be active. And so there may be some spin-off support for the event. And we do have a number of businesses on this part of San Mateo Avenue that are taking, currently taking advantage of the expedited rules that the city has for sidewalk dining. And so the five closure points are two hard closures at Canes and San Mateo Avenue on the top portion of the screen. Then followed by another hard closure on the southern portion of San Mateo Avenue at Angus. And by hard closure, I mean closing the street with barricades that are, one, both capable of stopping a car with a opening that is staffed so we can have emergency vehicle access. And so as we'll talk about it in the next slide, we will need to maintain a 20-foot access down the center of the road should there be a need for emergency vehicle. And so we would do a hard closure, but have it staff with the ability to open. This has been an important marker, which is a Samtrans bus stop that travels on Saturdays down San Mateo Avenue. The other three closures are, there's an entrance here for a portion of the parking lot for Arctic Show shows. There's another one here for Arctic Show shows, and there is this area here for, to our city parking lot, Lot 8. There's actually another entrance here. There, Arctic Show shows has already taken care of this with their existing modifications, as well as the other entrance here. And so we feel comfortable with the work that has already been done there. So the temporary closures we would implement would be five. And this is also a nice block section because we will not be needing to protect T intersections. It's really two hard closures. So a few details about a potential closure on Saturdays from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Note that we, the city has the current best practice of noticing event parking restrictions for 72 hours before the event. And so if we are talking about a Saturday event, the notices would typically go out 72 hours in advance, and so we would be noticing on Wednesday. Putting up A-frames and signs, letting people know that there will be parking restrictions on that area. No parking in the designated area, so San Mateo Avenue between Canes and, Angus and Canes, from 8:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. You may say, well, that's longer than the event. And so it's three hours before and two hours after the event. That's necessary for setup, both of the road closures, as well as for the restaurants to allow time for setup and cleanup, as well as potentially towing vehicles. When these events occur, even though you notice 72 hours in advance, there may be cars that are still there when time comes around. And so we would be prepared to implement normal practices and tow vehicles out of the area. The city and the Chamber of Commerce will jointly advertise the event using various social media platforms. And the Chamber of Commerce, through their grant from the San Bruno Community Foundation, has actually added some part-time staff, and so they have agreed to help out with some foot power to get the word out. The city will be responsible for road closures and security. Our public works department will be geared up to implement the road closures. And security will, of course, be provided by the police department. One of the citizens hit on the next point, which is absolutely, businesses will be responsible for cleanup and setup of their own tables. And so this is strictly an event where the city is providing the table, so to speak, by closing the roads, but the businesses will provide the service. The other important key point that we didn't really get into at the last council meeting, but I believe it was the intent, so we have it here, which is only businesses with a presence in the designated area can participate. And this is important because what we do not want to create is a fair-type atmosphere. But what we were talking about doing, is my understanding, is closing a portion of San Bruno Avenue to allow the businesses that border that area to hopefully attain more business and provide a service to the community. And so I think that's a discussion point for us. But judging from the conversation, I do believe that was the council's intent. It's not to invite others and have spaces where people can be, but it's really designated for the businesses in that area. Important to point out, both by businesses, we mean both restaurants and retail. So if there's a retail establishment in the area and they wanted to set out a table to sell their merchandise, we would be okay with that. I believe that was the intent expressed as well. And then I mentioned the 20-foot clearance down the middle of the street would be reserved for emergency vehicle access. So what is the cost? So we put together preliminary costs, and the total, jump to it, for one day is $6,300. Now, you should know that this represents the net additional costs. We are not charging for items like we would for a non-city-sponsored special event where there would be time for merchandise that the city are, or materials that the city already has, or time to use equipment that we already have. And so because this is a city-sponsored event, we are not charging for those. But hard dollar cost is a total of $4,600 from the public works department for staffing to set up the event, as well as barricades, a little bit over half of that. Staffing and the rest is renting barricades. You may be wondering what type of barricades. Hard barricades that are capable of stopping a car, so both water-filled barricades as well as concrete barricades. We do not stock those with our various projects. We always rent those. And so we would do that for this instance. And then we would also have police and officer a few hours before the event to supervise the closing of the roads, as well as to ticket and tow any vehicles that are necessary, as well as two CSOs to work the event. And so I wanted to talk to council about a potential alternative that came up, actually from another council member to me, which is to look at a potential alternative if the council did not want to close this portion of the street for outdoor dining. But instead, look at, in this same area, we have our Lot 8, which is this lot that goes from Massana Ave to San Mateo Avenue, a city-owned property. And the concept is potentially close it or, and set it up for self-service to-go dining. And so we would set up picnic tables in this area, appropriately space them apart to allow all businesses to participate. Some businesses may set up tables, some may not, but all that are open are serving to-go meals. And so patrons can take their meals to-go and eat in the parking lot. And we can decide whether we close the entire parking lot or only the front portion. So to close at roughly the halfway mark and have a closure here, middle of the parking lot and on San Mateo Avenue. A few additional considerations that the city council like to move forward with closing the portion of San Mateo Avenue that we've talked about, again, aims to Canes. The 24-hour notice would go out on Wednesdays, and so if the council said yes, implement, ordinarily, we would be posting those notices tomorrow. Another question, do we want to confirm restaurant participation? You know, if you build it, will they come? And so we have done outreach, the Chamber of Commerce supported this effort and put out an additional survey. Our very own council member, Marty Medina, walked the Ave and provided a document to staff with the results of his outreach. And in general, it's mixed. Some businesses are for it, I believe in this section. We have two businesses that have said a definite yes. One business that has said a no, and another business that may potentially be interested. But while we haven't had a positive outreach from all businesses, what I want to tell the councils, that does not mean that they will not participate. But the question I'm posing to the city council is, do we want to, before we activate, confirm that the restaurants are actually going to participate and set out tables and have that confirmation, or would you like staff to launch the program, do the outreach, and treat it as a pilot, and hopefully our businesses participate? Not in this section, but from the survey that we have from the council member, anecdotal information from staff, and initial preliminary results from the chamber survey. Some businesses are okay to take out. Others think that it is too dangerous for their employees. And some businesses say that they have tried outside dining, but their customers were not receptive to it, and so they're fine with to-go right now. So I think the summary is, it's mixed. And we cannot give you a definitive answer right now that the businesses as a lot are supporting it or against it. And so it's really a policy decision for the city council, and staff will work to implement whatever your direction is. Rerouting the Samtrans bus, this is unfortunately a bit of, not bad news, but essentially no news as of yet, and that we have not been able to confirm if they plan with Samtrans to reroute the bus. That does take a little time. They need to post a new stop. They need to advertise it and make sure that the map is correct and the driver and everyone in their system knows that. So unfortunately, I do think that this is the thing that would prevent us, unless we have a breakthrough tomorrow, would prevent us really from doing it this weekend. But staff does feel that it's possible because council may remember that the Samtrans bus here was rerouted when we did our road reconstruction project two years ago along the Ave. However, that was a process, and Samtrans was a part of that project for several months leading up to it. And so they were able to reroute the bus very efficiently before we began the project. And the outreach we've done over the last two weeks, we have not gotten a definitive confirmation that that can occur. We feel confident that it can. We just need to let the system work itself. The other question that I would like to pose to council is that if the restrictions change and restaurants are allowed to partially open indoors, are we going to hold the event? And I'm posing this just so that we have clear direction. That if council says go, we're go. If the restrictions change, we're still going to be a go. For how many weeks is the question? Do we want to do it as one pilot? Or does council want to authorize it to begin as soon as we can through a four-week period? Maybe to, maybe clip it at the end of September, maybe go for a certain number of weeks. And the other question is funding. And so at $6,300 per week, certainly, we can afford a pilot. I'm not asking the city council if you would like us to see for a allocation of funds. This would be treated similar to the other things that we've done for COVID-19, where through the ELC, we will authorize the expenditure. Those monies are, as you know, going either against the city's general fund fund balance or we are working on a plan to allocate them to CARES Act or other federal dollars, federal and state dollars that we are receiving for COVID-19. And some of this may very well apply for one of those funding sources. And so the summary there is, if council would like us to begin, don't look at funding as the reason why we cannot implement a pilot immediately or as soon as the boxes are checked. And so with that, I want to close out the presentation and open for questions and direction from council.
There we go. Sorry. Okay. Thank you, city manager, for the report. And let's see, hold on, I think we have, with council's permission, we do have a couple of folks in the audience. I'd like to be able to ask them to come in now and so they can offer their comments in case they need to do other things. City clerk, if you could bring in?
Tim O'Brien. Hi, Tim, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, whenever you're ready.
Great. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on this item. Yes, I think it'd be, I'm in support of this closing down the San Mateo Avenue. It'd be great for the community, as well as the businesses. And as I said, I think it'd be a good timeout for the, you know, the community and for San Bruno as well, and for helping the businesses out. I think they'll really appreciate it. And I've had the opportunity to have an experience in Burlingame, and I think it was great. It really brought a lot of people out. You know, you do have to take into consideration the COVID-19, but I'm in support of it. And I think it'd be a great thing to do, just to try it out a couple of times and see how it works and get back to the report on how it goes. And I think, I remember San Bruno used to have street festivals, and it was a great timeout. This was going back years ago, and I think this would be great. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, Tim.
Okay, next we have John Kevraanian. Hi, John, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Whenever you're ready.
Honorable mayor and members of the city council, thank you for this opportunity to speak in support of the San Mateo Avenue street closure. And also, I congratulate the city staff for a great presentation. Thank you. As a president of the Broadway Business Improvement District, I would like to make some recommendations to the city in regards to the street closure. We started as a pilot program on Broadway. We gave a 72-hour notice to the public in advance. And then the second week, the notice went to 24 hours. The community started getting used to it. And when you do too far in advance of a notice, if you don't have the signs with large fonts, many times, customers will drive away thinking they cannot park that moment or that day. So we encourage cities to do 24 hours so it doesn't harm regular business in advance. And also, on Broadway, we don't use barricades to block the street. We use A-frames. Broadway is a thoroughfare, and knock on wood, A-frames have worked well. They're cheaper to use, and we have not had any incidents the past seven weeks. It brings the cost down. So those are some of my suggestions. And I would recommend that the signs, the no-parking signs are in large fonts so people see the time and the day, so they know it's not for the day they're parking. Thank you so much for your time, and thank you so much for your support on this issue.
Thank you for your comments, John.
Okay, I don't see any other hands raised.
Okay.
Actually, one just popped up. We have Claudia Quinn.
Mitch Sean Quinn.
Oh, hello. Whenever you're ready, Sean.
Yeah, I'm ready to go. I'm in support of the street closure, too. And if one thing is, we've kind of left out the other end of the street up where Cafe Leon's is, and there's West Coast Cafe, and there's, I think, a Filipino area. If there's some way we could get some kind of direction to help them, we want to have the whole street, I think, benefit from this, even though we're not going to close the thoroughfare all the way. But we want to try and, let's get everybody's businesses up. I mean, it's a tax base, obviously. So I think we just need to be mindful of the other end, too. It's not just for one section. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Sean.
Okay, we have one more hand. Actually, it looks like Tim O'Brien's hand is up. Bring him in. It might be Reina.
Hi, good evening. Yes, it is Reina. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for the time, for giving me the opportunity to speak. I totally agree with Mr. Quinn, what he just stated, that we have to support West Coast Cafe, and that places towards the end of San Mateo Avenue. And I totally support for the closure of the street. And I think that in San Bruno, we need to take risks. We need to take the opportunity and enhance downtown. We all, I like what West Coast Cafe is doing, having the sidewalk. And if that gets, the city gets, the street gets shut down, I think more people will be inclined to come and basically dine outside. So let's take a chance, and I know it's going to work. So thank you so much for your time, and I hope you consider opening, closing the street. Thank you.
Thank you for comments, Reina.
And next we have Claire Luna.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
I just want to say that I'm in support of the closure. A lot of people have been stuck at home, and, you know, San Bruno, you know, the... you know, usually you can go to Tanforan and kind of walk around the mall with your kids and whatnot. And since it's closed, we can't really do that. I've kind of already been to San Bruno Park, but there's other areas where I definitely want to take my kids because they've been inside for a long time because, you know, the parks are closed and whatnot. Sometimes the beaches are closed too. So it'd be a really nice thing for families to do on a Saturday to go to lunch and kind of walk around San Mateo Avenue. So that would be great. And I'm sure other families are in that position too where they need to kind of take their kids out. And so, yes, I'm supportive of that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Claire, for your comments. I'm not seeing anybody else this time.
Neither do I.
Okay. With that, I'm going to bring it back to council and council member Mason.
Thank you for putting that presentation together. I did want to ask the city manager about, you had mentioned, I think, I'm not sure how you said it, but that some of the businesses are already participating in outdoor dining. And so I was wondering which ones. I know on the map, I didn't see Nori and Atlas Pizza, but I know that they both have sidewalk dining available. Mari Mar, I know they have sidewalk dining available in Grand Leader. But the Korean and the Japanese, I think there's two Japanese restaurants. I haven't been boiling Beijing. I don't think I've seen any sidewalk dining. Are any of them interested? Or has anyone expressed support in that area that just hasn't set up yet?
Councilmember Mason, you know your San Mateo Avenue. It's all the businesses you mentioned with the addition of La Paloma, the Mexican restaurant on the corner of Cane's and San Mateo Avenue.
Okay, great. And then just piggybacking off of one of the public speakers, is the rotation a possibility of doing, if we end up approving more than one weekend, one half of the San Mateo Avenue and then the next weekend, the other half?
Yes, we can do that, absolutely. I'm pausing because you mentioned the speakers and one of the speakers did mention A-frames and the twenty-four-hour posting. And so the police chief is ready to address that at the council's desire, but we can certainly rotate.
So I'm in support of this. I think it would be just, I understand we're in the middle of an international pandemic and public health is the most important thing that we need to deal with and make sure that we're addressing. But per Ms., per Claire Luna's comment, I think it's really important that the public has an opportunity to get out. And why not get out and support our small business while we're out there? So that's my comment and I would love to hear from the chief. Thank you.
Okay, Ryan, or city clerk, can you bring in Ryan Johansson? And it's,
He is, he's in the room.
Ask the question because we had this very same discussion. So Chief Johansson.
Yeah, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I'm Ryan Johansson, your chief of police. Just to comment on a couple of items that have been brought up from a public safety standpoint. The reason for the recommendation of the concrete K-rails is because that would be the industry standard in order to protect pedestrians and anyone who's out on foot in a roadway where cars normally travel. I know it's hard to contemplate, having to think of the unthinkable, but certainly in the recent past, all over the world, we have had incidents in which cars are used as weapons against human beings. And unfortunately, somewhat for me, it is my job as a representative of the city to plan for the worst-case scenario. And if heaven forbid, we decided to cut corners and put in less protective barricades and the unthinkable did happen, I think we would have a great deal of difficulty explaining why we made that decision. And I would encourage you not to just follow suit with the fact that you've seen lesser protections in other cities, meaning that it's the right thing to do. Not to call those cities out because I'm not sure what their planning process was or whether or not police departments were brought into the equation, but this would be the industry standard for any kind of an event where you are putting pedestrians out on a roadway where vehicles normally travel and will have access from adjacent roadways. Is a concrete hard barrier that will stop a vehicle from traveling down that roadway and harming people in the event that intentionally or otherwise someone decided to do so. And so that's the reason for the concrete K-rail recommendation over the A-frames or even water barriers. The water barriers are another grade up above A-frame or just simple cones or stanchions, but they will not stop a vehicle in the event that someone is driving through there towards a bunch of people who are seated eating in the middle of the street. And so that's the recommendation there. There was also a comment about a lower notice period on the no parking. And I will say that the speaker's comments are, by my experience, pretty accurate. When we put out signs ahead of time, frequently people don't stop to read all the specifics on the signs. They think, oh, I can't park here, even though the parking, no parking doesn't take effect for maybe two or three days. And that could hurt businesses down there in the area, which I'm certainly sensitive to. However, this is a legal requirement to authorize towing. So we cannot post less than seventy-two hours in advance and still physically remove those vehicles legally if we need to. So the seventy-two hours is the minimum in advance that those things need to be posted in order for us to actually clear the street. Hopefully that answers the two questions that I was asked to address, but I'm of course happy to answer any others that may have come up that are in my purview.
Thank you, chief. Other questions from council, council member Davis?
I definitely wanted to hear from council member Medina on his feedback, just sort of get his summary of the businesses. But my intention has never been to not support this program if the businesses want this, right? I mean, I'm here to support the businesses. I'm here to make decisions that says to a business, I can be successful because the city's offered this. That's my number one. And so if I can hear from staff that what we're hearing is that the majority of the businesses want this and that this is going to be a benefit to them and it's not going to deter business, I'm all for that. And maybe like a lot of people are saying, let's just try it out. Let's pilot it out. Let's see if they, they will come. You know, is that saying, you know, you build it and they will come? And we can go from there. But again, I'd like to hear council member Medina's firsthand viewpoint.
Well, what works out well is council member Medina's hand is up.
Let me lower it before I forget. So yeah, the preliminary walks were pretty much at the height of the flare-up of COVID. And the data of all the locations, I was all provided to staff and it's my understanding they're going back out to confirm, have people change their minds. Since walking the street there, we've seen increased activity, even without the street being closed. Mari Mar has an incredible amount of business going on right now from their frontage all the way over to Grand Leader, who closes at six. So Nori's outside, Atlas is outside, La Paloma's outside. And I think that with our restaurants and businesses seeing that the city's really moving forward, that they'll be more encouraged. And so at the minimum, I would say we would try for a couple of weeks to see how it's building, evaluate in two weeks how the public is reacting and seeing if it can be built upon by more restaurants and businesses deciding to try it out. So my question for staff is a little bit more of a breakdown in the costs because I'm really surprised that we don't have any K-rail. A city our size, that they're not available. And if they're not available, then we should be purchasing them because you do need those for many different reasons. And if it, with the breakdown on actually buying compared to renting, and if the street has to have a opening to allow the twenty-foot clearance, so the K-rail's being moved, we're having our operator stand by waiting to move it from one side or the other in the case that a car needed to go through. Is that how it's working? I'm not familiar with how we would try to close that with the K-rail.
Sure. Council member, let me address that. So a couple of points. Can totally provide the breakdown to the city council and will do subsequent to this meeting of all the costs. With regard to the hard closure, there are currently two versions of that. One is to completely K-rail off Cane's at San Mateo Ave and Cane's at San Bruno Avenue. I'm sorry, Cane's, Cane's at San Mateo Avenue and Angus at San Mateo Avenue. So to K-rail both of those and have the emergency vehicle access route be through the parking lot off Masson. And so there can be a softer closure there that is staffed. And typically, when you have your soft closure, you have an officer there that can hopefully intervene if there is a vehicle trying to enter where they should not. If the closure, if the emergency vehicle access point is actually on San Mateo Avenue at Cane's or Angus, there will likely be a vehicle parked in that twenty-foot space that can be moved when an emergency vehicle has to go down the street. Now, yes, that does create a softer point, but it is an easier access point for emergency vehicles. But staff will work on that and develop a plan that is appropriate. And with regard to owning K-rails or buying K-rails, we rent them. We have contractors on standby for our emergency projects that happen. If we have a big thing in the middle of the night, we have an emergency contractor that can bring that out. But we have sort of a, we're a smallish agency and so we've never invested in those. And when we do our larger projects, those are typically a cost of the project and the contractor has them. And so the public may say, what do you mean you have K-rail? You did a road project for a couple of months and there was K-rail there. Well, that was actually the contractor's K-rail and that cost was folded into the project. We can talk to staff about purchasing K-rail. The brief conversation is that it's sort of a three-pronged issue. It's buying the K-rail, storing the K-rail and having the equipment to move the K-rail.
Right, okay.
For our normal operations, we do not have that ability on the air.
Got it. How much space does each restaurant get? Would that be dependent on how many, obviously, are participating? But if it did catch on, they're allowed to be like kind of directly in front of their store? And they get like two parking spaces? Or how does that work?
Yeah. It's going to be different depending on the restaurant. Sometimes you have restaurants next door to each other. Other times you have a space where they could have a larger seating area. You know, given that area, I think there'll be a natural flow, given where the restaurants are. But the space available to restaurants for seating, because you will have that twenty-foot path down the center of San Mateo Avenue, will not be the whole roadway. It will essentially be a little bit beyond the parking strip. So essentially the parking strip and the sidewalk is what will be available for that outdoor dining area. And so it will not be tables set up in the middle of the roadway.
Right. It's not curb-to-curb, but it definitely will be the parking spaces.
Absolutely.
Okay. I think that answers most of my questions. I think we'll find out. I'm not too sure if moving it back and forth is probably the best idea, but because the majority of the restaurants are there. If there are two peseos that are further south that we should be able to offer up for those restaurants, that they can go ahead and use those without a street closure at all, that would save money and also be available to them. Be a lot cheaper for them to do that or for everyone to do that. But I'm in favor of this. I think we go ahead and give us a shot. Make sure that there's plenty of signs, remind everybody, A-frame signs to wear their masks. And it really isn't a place to really come out and play, right? This is a place to come out and eat. So I wanted to be really clear with that. So it's not the place to bring your kids to kind of ride bikes and kind of hang out. That would be better suited at a park. So I just wanted to make it clear that there aren't any high expectations, that this is a gathering play space. This is a place that we're providing at our cost to help our restaurants out. And if I'm mistaken, then please help, please correct me. But I just wanted to make that, to question that, to make sure that everybody's clear on what is supposed to happen here and how we're supposed to behave.
Sure. So to the mayor, I'll take that one. I think I've heard a unanimous chorus from all council members in our one-on-ones and in these meetings. I think everyone wants activity downtown and everyone wants that sort of classic street fair atmosphere on the Ave. But I think we all recognize and we know that that's not safe right now, right? And what we're talking about is providing a street closure to provide outdoor dining, so an increased area for some of the, probably the restaurants that are already setting up outdoor dining to give them more space to stretch out on Saturday and hopefully more restaurants will participate. What we are not doing is having a large community gathering or anything that resembles a street fair because large gatherings are not allowed now, nor are they advisable based on our county health officer and the CDC. And so I think your summary was absolutely correct. And the information that we put out to the community will certainly convey that because it is not the place to gather.
Last question, Mr. Mayor?
Please.
So with this additional dining, hopefully there will be, the additional trash is expected to be taken by each restaurant? Or are they going to try to cram them in the garbage cans that are downtown? What is the expectation and responsibility for that?
Right. So again, because we're not doing a street fair, there should not be much more trash than a restaurant would have had during their normal operations that they were operating fully indoor. And so we fully expect for the restaurants to do setup and cleanup and take care of their trash at home.
Okay. So thank you. I'm in support of this.
Any further questions, comments from council? I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Salazar? Oh, and then council member Mason, I apologize.
Yeah, so I think this is really looking promising and I wanted to thank staff for that presentation. It's nice that it's starting to gel. And I have been hearing a lot of interest from the public in doing something like this. And it seemed like the, you know, the response from the business community was tepid and perhaps it's improving. So definitely appreciate that feedback and reaching back out to them again. One question I had in terms of their participation was around whether there is some level of commitment from the city that would make it more beneficial to the business community, meaning that if we say we're only going to do this once and try it out or twice, is it worth it for them to add staff to help them, you know, move their furniture around and accommodate everything and bring in a waitstaff to help with the process? So, you know, I think there might be some level of commitment there that if we were to put that forward, might make the businesses a little more comfortable with participating. Again, if it doesn't pan out for them or then, you know, they probably wouldn't want to continue doing it anyway. But it does seem like there is a bit of a startup cost for them. So I want to make sure that we're taking that into consideration when presenting this to them and basically setting the expectations correctly. And, you know, seeing that, you know, that we did get some public participation on this meeting and just from what I've heard from the public, I think the public is interested in going out there. But I think council member Medina's comments were very appropriate in that we do have to be careful about how we advertise what this is and what it's not. And I had a question also about what role the city will take in terms of providing guidance on how tables should be configured, whether, you know, the spacing is, you know, are we going to limit, how many tables are placed, you know, what the density is per restaurant? Or are we leaving that up to the restaurants? And then also in terms of enforcement of the patrons' actions, you know. So face coverings are still required while people are out there. Obviously, not while they're eating, but while they're in the area. And would we expect the And would we expect the police department to enforce, you know, either clustering of people or, you know, non-dining related activities in the area and the use of face coverings?
City Manager?
So we will have CSOs present. And I do think that we will provide soft reminders by enforcement. Hanging out citations, I think will be difficult. And so I think we would do that in line with how we have typically enforced all of these health measures, which is lead with education first and hope for compliance and then take the necessary enforcement steps if there is not compliance. What we have resoundly seen is that people in our community care about each other and comply. As we've talked about before with enforcement, there are a number of exemptions, frankly, that make enforcement challenging. And setting up for outdoor dining, people will be eating and drinking. And so I think we can expect to see a number of people with their masks off. And that is a part of this. With regard to the other portion of your question is providing guidance, we will certainly ensure that businesses have all the appropriate links to not only our local health department regulations, but the state and the CDC guidance. We will not be promulgating new regulations or distances for tables. For this event, we will make sure that restaurants have access to the information and provide any appropriate support that we can. But we're essentially, you know, setting the table. We're closing the streets and we're allowing the restaurants to expand. But we will not be promulgating new rules.
Okay. And the current requirements around outdoor dining require people to have face coverings on unless they're seated at a table and dining. Is that correct?
Unless they're eating or drinking. So you can be seating, seated waiting on your food, but you're still supposed to wear your mask.
Okay, all right. Okay, yeah, I'm definitely interested in seeing this, you know, prosper. I think it would be great if we can, any little boost that we can give to our businesses and any relief we can bring to our residents would be definitely welcome. So I'm in favor of trying this out.
And Javon, you may need to bring back the slide because I know you'd asked a few questions. I want to go, I think, as you said, we're all in support of it as you've probably heard from various of us, maybe five different times on your one-on-ones. But going to the A frames. So for me personally, you know, I don't know what my colleagues feel, but if our police chief is making a recommendation for safety of the residents and downtown and the community, then I'm apt to concur with him. And don't want to leave anything to chance in our unique year that we're having. 72-hour notice, I think he's addressed that, is that it's required in order to tow a vehicle. He said confirm restaurant participation. I didn't quite hear that answered. I mean, I know what Councilmember Medina has done. So I think we have some, we don't. Hold the restrictions, change restaurants are allowed to open. Okay, so we'll wait for that. You're asking how many weeks in funding? So your estimate is about $6,300 per event for the day? And then how many weeks? I think the council needs to maybe come up with some direction for staff. Is it for two particular Saturdays? Is it for three? Is it, I think it's one of the city manager's questions for us.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
I mean, I'd like to go for a month. But I also want an option, like if it's just not happening, like after a couple of weeks, like we have to make a decision to, or give staff the decision to, you know, like, there's two restaurants out there, you know, and five tables. I don't think that's worth it. But I'm hopeful that it won't get there, but you never know, right? I mean, things are, I looked at the weather, it should be fine through this weekend, but you know, how is it going to change, you know? What if there's, you know, another, anyway, there's a ton of reasons. I think that it'd be great, we can go a month, but we need to really reevaluate it in a couple of weeks to see if it's still kind of a thing and it's increasing or it isn't a thing and it's pretty much dead. So I'm hopeful that it's going to work out. I'll go back and talk to the restaurants and now I can say, hey, we're actually doing it. You know, not like before where it was kind of like, hey, would you be interested? It's like, hey, we're closing the street for you. Get your tables out there and give it a shot and we'll see you on Saturday.
Okay, and I like your, like you said, go a couple because you have to have some continuity. And then we, you know, city manager, are you looking at this Saturday? Or can that be done or is that too quick?
I think realistically, the fastest we can implement would be on the 19th. And so that is the 19th of September. If council would like us to report back, we can report back on your meeting on the 22nd for how the 19th went. And then unfortunately, we will not meet in our regular meeting again until October 13th. And so there'll be a number of Saturdays unless we discover a special meeting if we were to call it off. And so we can certainly do the 19th, the 26th, the 3rd and the 10th. Or some subset of that. And not that I want the power to cancel this, to cancel it without coming back to council, but that is one option, which is allow staff the ability to terminate if attendance is not appropriate or we can schedule a special meeting.
Okay, colleagues, are we okay with the 19th?
To the chair?
Councilmember Davis?
So yeah, I concur with what Marty said. I think, yes, let's go with the 19th and let's give staff the ability to cancel should they need to if it's really not successful. We don't need to wait and have a special meeting to cancel it if you're only getting five tables out there, I think, like Marty said. I think if you feel like we're not really sure if we should cancel it, if you need to have a special meeting, I will meet anytime, any day because I think it's important that we can concur and get come to the consensus.
Thank you. Councilmember Mason?
Yeah, I'd love to see the four Saturdays, starting with the 19th and ending on the 10th. The 10th, I think, is normally a three-day weekend. So I think that we'll have an idea by then whether people are coming out or not. I also agree with the chief's recommendation around the barricades. And I did want to ask, I did want to ask a question. Sorry, I had my hand up earlier. But what if you're not a restaurant? So I know it says outdoor dining retail. So if you're not a restaurant or you're a restaurant that doesn't choose to use the space in front, does that open it up to somebody else?
Councilmember, was that a question for me or your colleagues?
No, that's a question for you, city manager.
So I'm going to toss it back. I think that's a policy question for the city council. The, in one of the opening slides, I mentioned, it said businesses and restaurants, being that if you're, if you're, if you're just a regular retailer, you can participate. We had not thought to extend it to other businesses on the ad that are not within the designated closure area. Given the likelihood that a restaurant that's not in that area would probably not sort of have staff running a block or two to serve and set up their tables that far away. And by offering it to retailers that are not on that given section, it starts to feel more like a outdoor fair that we're inviting people to or a farmer's market. And that's, those type of large gatherings aren't really occurring outside of limited things for farmer's markets because it's food.
I think I was thinking more, I guess, along the lines of if you have two restaurants next door to each other, I agree with you. I think, I don't know that people are going to be wanting to run back and forth down the avenue. But if you have two restaurants next to each other and one chooses not to have outdoor dining and the other one does, is there anything stopping us from saying you can take more space in front of the other restaurant?
No, from a staff perspective, we will be totally flexible. I mean, if, you know, the street's going to be closed and as long as there's not a competing business, you know, we'll work with them to allow them all the space they need.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is that for 9/19, per your recommendation, city manager, to begin then. I've heard going to through 10/10, with the understanding, as Councilmember Davis said too, if it is not something that's finding itself, for whatever reason, whether, whatever's going on, that if the staff feels that, you know, the 60, the time and the resources being put in are not of a benefit in what we'd hoped to bring, then, you know, you can always email council or I think we trust you to make that decision. And as Councilmember Davis said too, if you needed to call, that's fine. I mean, have a special meeting or something. City manager, have we given you enough direction?
Yes, let's, I want to clarify a couple of things.
Please.
I am fully confident that staff can execute for the 19th. What I do want to offer as a caveat, and so I don't want to sort of announce to the community that it will occur on the 19th, is that we still need to confirm the rerouting of the Samtrans bus. And so subject to that, I think we can execute on the 19th and cross all the i's and dot all the t's. And I want, I think it would be nice to have clarity on direction from council. We're essentially saying a four-week pilot. So going through, likely become 19, going through the 10th of October. I think we should have it clear, if attendance is not high and it looks like there is not, that the community and the businesses are not taking advantage of the pilot, the decision to council, are you okay with staff making that call or do you want a special meeting?
I personally am fine with council, with staff making that determination.
Me too.
Mr. Medina has given a thumbs up.
Yeah, we got this far. I'm okay with it. Thank you.
Okay, you've got all in concurrence.
So I think we're going to, I think we have a public comment too.
We already did public comment on this? Anything else? City manager? He muted himself. Okay, so.